Denver 8 TV, your city, your source.
Good evening. Thank you all so much for coming. My name is Peter Graff. I used to be somebody. A former president of the Colorado Senate did a few things on education. Currently, I'm the principal at MCG2 Consulting and we do a variety of work on education across the country and education initiatives and education transformation projects across the country. And this is one of my favorite projects because of the people that it involves. And we're going to get the mayors up here very quickly, but let me acknowledge a couple of people who are here who helped bring all of this together. First, Sherman White, who is from the Walton Family Foundation, one of our funders. And Education Reform Now, our partners on this tour and co-host Van, I'm just going to call you out because you used to do a lot of work with them. So, great organization doing a lot of work to bring Democrats into the fold along with Democrats for Education Reform. Let me acknowledge some dignitaries who are here. Our lieutenant governor, Joe Garcia, is here. Think the former lieutenant governor and soon-to-be board of education member Barbara O'Brien is supposed to be here. Tell her I did give her a shout-out if she's not here. State Representative Brittany Pedersen, I believe, is here. And Chris Herndon, I believe, is on his way. I don't see the councilman here. About a year and a half ago, Mayor Hancock reached out to me and asked a variety of questions about who was doing great work in terms of mayors across the country. And a number of names kind of bubbled to the surface, but three immediately came to the top of our conversation about mayors who are being innovative, mayors who are closing the achievement gap, preparing kids for college and a career, and then preparing their cities a great workforce. And the three gentlemen who will be participating were the ones that Mayor Hancock really wanted to have a conversation about. And that's what this tour is about, traveling to each of their cities, gathering best practices and seeing what can be replicated and brought back to their cities to continue to close the achievement gap that many of students of colors face across this country. So, let me bring them out and introduce our moderator and start this conversation. First, I'd like to introduce the former All-Pro NBA basketball star. The unique thing about all four of these gentlemen is they attended public schools in the cities in which they govern. And Mayor Johnson talked a little bit and maybe he'll share the story about what really drove him to be part of this conversation in terms of transforming our public school system and transforming education across the country. But please welcome the great mayor of the city of Sacramento, the Honorable Kevin Johnson. Mayor Hancock said he looks like Mayor Johnson. Maybe in several inches. Next, I had the privilege of doing some National Charter School work. And one of the places I visited was Rhode Island, in the city of Providence and the surrounding cities around Providence. And they have a wonderful program that hopefully we'll get to see. It's called Mayor Oil Academies. And when I was there, it was right before a mayor's election. And I kept hearing this name, Angel Taveras, Angel Taveras, he's going to be an absolute superstar if he wins. Well, he won, and he is an actual superstar doing great work in the city of Providence. Please welcome the mayor of Providence, Angel Taveras. We have four mayors who are part of this effort, but one of them actually had to work tonight. The city council in San Antonio meets on Wednesdays and Thursdays. And so, one of the mayors that Mayor Hancock really wanted to be part of this tour is Mayor Julian Castro from the city of San Antonio. And he said, "I can't be there, but I've got to figure out a way to participate." And so, his staff and Mayor Hancock's staff have hooked him up, so he's going to be joining us live via satellite. Please give him a welcome in San Antonio. Our moderator for tonight is the editor-in-chief of The Denver Post, somebody who is making a huge difference, not only in the newspaper industry, but what he does outside of his work. So, please welcome the moderator for this evening, Greg Moore.
So, can everybody hear? Can everybody hear? Okay. So, you guys are going to share the mic. Mayor Castro, I'll make sure I keep you involved in the conversation. My goal is to sort of keep it going. I'm going to be including some questions that have been gathered from the audience ahead of time, and we're going to see if we can keep it lively. Before we get to the questions, I wanted to turn it over to the honorable mayor of Denver, Michael Hancock. You all know, he cares deeply about education, cares deeply about the city. And we're going to basically allow the mayors to have essentially an opening statement, sort of talk about their concern and how they're trying to address issues of education in their various cities. Mayor Hancock.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Moore, Greg Moore. And I want to thank my counterparts across the country. Mayor Julian Castro, thank you for joining us from San Antonio via satellite. Certainly to Mayor Johnson from Sacramento and Mayor Taveras from Providence. We have run into each other all over the country, and we have worked together all over the country, talking about the issue of education. And I'll tell you what my evolution has been over the years. Senator, and before I say anything else, I want to make sure we acknowledge our lieutenant governor, Joe Garcia, here, who is... There's no greater education champion than Lieutenant Governor Garcia. I know there's no greater champion for our children in education, and particularly early childhood education, than Lieutenant Governor Joe Garcia. So, thank you for being here. My evolution has been one of a very interesting and personal journey. Senator Graff and I kind of grew up together as young adults in the city and used to talk about education. And my interest had always been on the local level, local government. And I used to just abdicate that responsibility to the state. So, that's the state's responsibility. It's not our responsibility on a local level. Till one snowy day, I decided to take a Sunday journey to my office, my district office, while on city council. And I had piles of papers that I had missed, have not worked on in a while. So, I thought I'd go clean my desk up while watching the Denver Broncos play. This is a year they weren't doing very well, so just having them on in the background would have been sufficient enough. And so, I started piling through the paper. And one of the stacks of paper that I came across was the School Performance Framework Reports from Denver Public Schools. And I decided to look at all the schools in my district. And what hit me that day was that 80% of the schools in the district that I represented, which was far northeast, starting with North Park Hill, going all the way back to DIA, 80% of the schools were either on watch or were red or in trouble. 80%. This district that I represented would have been the eighth-largest school district in the state of Colorado if we had succeeded and became our own school district. That's how many students lived in this area. And so, those students sat in, 80%, eight out of 10 of the schools were failing them. And that began my journey as a local leader to say, "We've got to change this." And today, that journey culminated with a tour of these mayors seeing the EVG Dennis Campus and learning that we have now families that have multiple options of high-performing schools in far northeast, some that are leading the state in growth. And so, that happened with a community organization, community-based effort, community members simply saying enough is enough, and all of us saying, "Let's get together and let's provide greater options for our kids." So, tonight, I hope we can talk about the role that local governments play, and particularly mayors, in helping to elevate the conversation of closing the achievement gap and really bringing a sense of urgency to the conversation about how we make sure that every child in the city has opportunity now access to high-performing quality schools. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mayor Hancock. I want to thank Mayor Hancock for really bringing us all together. You have an outstanding mayor here in Denver, Mayor Hancock. And we appreciate that you've shared him with a lot of us across the country. So, thank you, Mayor Hancock. And it's an honor to be here with Mayor Johnson and Mayor Castro as well, talking about education. For me, I feel very strongly about education because I wouldn't be here without it. My parents were born in houses without running water or electricity, and they didn't go beyond the eighth grade in school. They're from the Dominican Republic. And I was born in New York and raised in Providence. I'm a head start baby, went through the public schools, went on to Harvard and Georgetown Law. And I understand that education is the path out of poverty. I know because I've traveled it. All of the mayors here have traveled it. We're all public school graduates. And for me, it's about making sure that I prepare the next generation for the future. And I don't talk about preparing them to be workers. I mean, that's important, it is to be the workforce. But I talk about preparing them to be leaders. They are the leaders of tomorrow. And that's something that we need to recognize moving forward. And in Providence, what I've tried to do is something that your mayor has done here, and that's focus on cradle to career, cradle to career, from the time they're born, even actually before they're born, but from the time they're born, from birth all the way to career. And we're really excited because we just won the Bloomberg Philanthropies Mayor's Challenge. And that's going to allow us, with the help of Lena Foundation from here in Colorado, that's going to allow us to really help close the word gap that exists between less affluent and more affluent kids and make sure that they start school ready to learn. And we're looking forward as well to making sure all of our kids read at grade level. Sacramento Reads is a program that the mayor is very involved in. And we have started Providence Reads since I became mayor, focusing on getting our kids reading at grade level. We have a lot of work to do in our, in our country. It's not just our city, but all across the country. And I like to say that education is our collective responsibility. And so, it's so great to see City Year here because they're really an example of what you can do and how, when we take collective action, we can have big impact. And we have City Year in Providence. I know we have in Sacramento as well, and young people making a difference each and every day in our schools. So, for me, I'm thrilled to be here to talk to you about education. I know that we have a translator, pero quiero decir dos o tres cosas en español. Es un placer estar aquí con todos ustedes. Y hoy cuando visité las escuelas, una cosa que me gustó es hablar con muchos de los estudiantes que eran latinos porque quería dejarles saber que yo era, que yo soy el alcalde de Providence y quiero dejarles saber que ellos también pueden hacer lo que ellos quieran en este país, que no hay límite. Así que es un placer y un honor poder participar con todos ustedes hoy y me alegro mucho de verlo aquí porque eso quiere decir que ustedes están involucrados en la educación de sus hijos. So, thank you all very much for this opportunity. I look forward to talking further with you.
All right. Thank you very much. Mayor Castro, can you hear us?
I can hear you, yeah.
I want to know why you got the biggest ovation and you're not even here. This is awesome. I just want you to know, we got Mayor Castro, we got Mayor T right here, and Mayor Hancock. What's happening right now is not happening anywhere else in the country. You're getting mayors together that are saying, "We want to be a leader when it comes to having a discussion on how our cities serve our children." We all would say collectively, "You cannot have a great city without great public schools." And that's the commitment that we're all making. We believe it's a moral imperative, and you have to have mayors leading the way. You know what happens in Washington. Unfortunately, the gridlock, the partisan politics. We as mayors don't have that luxury. We got to make things happen. We don't care if you're a D and R. We just need to get results for our children. And that's what is so exciting about this. So, Mayor Hancock, I want to just start off by thanking you for your vision and for you getting us all together and raising the dollars to have this happen. You guys do not realize how lucky you are to have Mayor Hancock here in Denver. So, thank you for being here. One overall concept, what do we hope to accomplish? We want to start a dialogue. We want to create an awareness. There's a crisis going on in public education, and we want to talk about it. And by talking about it, as we visit our four cities, we're going to talk about what works, we're going to talk about solutions, we're going to talk about innovation, we're going to share best practices. That's one of the things that we want to accomplish. But what we need you to know is that there's an achievement gap in this country, a huge achievement gap in this country between black kids, Latino kids, and our white counterparts. And that is also why it is not a coincidence that you have two African-American mayors and two Latino mayors talking about this, because it's our children, it's our communities that are getting impacted adversely in ways that are just unacceptable in this country. And I'll talk about the data probably a little bit later. And then, the last thing I want to say on a personal note, I grew up, we went to public schools my whole life, and I got As and Bs. I thought I was a good student. I got a scholarship to Cal Berkeley, a great school. I'm in a freshman English class, thinking I'm a good student. I'm in that English class, and 29 other students are talking about a word I had never heard of before. And that word was euphemism. I... Don't be laughing, man. I'm not... See, 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 don't give me... Don't have me take off my coat already. So, I'm in this class, and these 29 other kids are talking about this word euphemism. And I'm like, "Is that even English?" Like, could you translate? You probably could translate that. I didn't know what this word was. So, I remember after class leaving, feeling like I was this small. And I went back to my dorm, and I got the dictionary, and I went to the U's to look up euphemi... Wait, Lieutenant Governor, come on now. So, I'm in the U's trying to figure out where this word is, and I can't find it. So, I'm trying to figure out how am I going to find a word that I ain't know how to spell, let alone know what it means. So, there was somebody else on my dorm floor, and I said, "Hey, you got a dictionary?" They said, "Yeah." I said, "Can you look up the word euphemism?" And they looked it up, and I saw for the first time it started with an E and not a U. And at that point in time, I realized for the first time, even though I thought I got good grades and I thought I was prepared, I was woefully unprepared for college. And I realized an A grade in Sacramento did not measure up to an A grade for some other kids that got A grades in affluent communities. And what a disservice it does to kids that if you think you are prepared for college and you walk in a classroom and you're not prepared. And I made it my lifelong commitment at that point in time to go back to my community in Sacramento and to make sure that an A grade in Sacramento can measure up with an A grade in Providence, Denver, San Antonio, and to make sure, with all due respect, that all kids who look like me knew what the word euphemism was.
Very good. So, the last opening statement is from Mayor Castro. Over to you.
All right. Can y'all hear me?
Can we hear him? Okay.
All right. First of... Sorry to be here tonight. We do work on Wednesdays and Thursdays for our council meeting, but I just wanted to start off by thanking you, Mayor Hancock, for hosting us this evening. I'm so excited to be part of the mayor's tour, particularly with Mayor Taveras and Mayor Johnson. Congratulations on all the great work that y'all have done to boost educational achievement in your own communities. And I'm very honored to participate with you. I'm the mayor, of course, of San Antonio, Texas, and we have a city of 1.3 million people. And our city is, I think, unique in a couple of ways with regard to education. The first is that we have 15 independent school districts that operate within the bounds of San Antonio. And that has some positive aspects and some challenging aspects. But one of the opportunities that it creates is that there's been a fantastic opportunity as mayor to sort of step into what is now a fractured system with a diffusion of responsibility about raising educational achievement community-wide and to try and fill some of the gaps. And I have a twin brother, Joaquin. Joaquin and I were educated in the public schools of San Antonio. And then, we were very blessed to get to go off to college at Stanford and then go to law school and then come back. And during the four years that I've been mayor, I've made a lot of my tenure about trying to ensure that other people, other young people, are blessed with the same opportunities that Joaquin and I have. And so, what we've tried to do is try and figure out strategically where there are some gaps in our educational ecosystem and expect more from everyone and expect more from ourselves at the city and try to fill those gaps. And so, in 2010, a year after I got elected, we started something called Cafe College, which was a one-stop center for folks to get great advice on admissions and financial aid and free ACT and SAT preparation courses, because we found that the ratio of students to counselors in our high schools was 420 students to one counselor in our public schools. And then, in 2012, the voters of San Antonio did something that they had never done before, which was they decided to increase the sales tax by an eighth of a cent to fund high-quality full-day prepaid for 22,404-year-olds in our city over the next eight years. And we just kicked that off. The first 650 or so students started in late August of this year. And so, what I have learned is that there is a real hunger out there among everyone in the education ecosystem, from students to parents to teachers to administrators and policymakers for folks to work together. And as I think that perhaps the mayors have had this experience as well, even if, as in San Antonio, you technically have no formal power over the school districts, a lot of folks think you do in your community. And they expect you to do something about education. And so, we've taken them up on that challenge, and I look forward to discussing a little bit of that. And more than anything else, again, I just want to say how honored I am to get to learn from what these mayors are doing in their own communities, fantastic work, and also to get to share what we've done in San Antonio.
All right. Very good. So, I'm going to ask the mayors, you know, if you can keep your answers kind of concise to the point so we can kind of keep the conversation moving. I want to build off of, really, Mayor Johnson's comments, because actually, that's also my experience. There were quite a few words I was using in college that did not exist. But there is, there is research out there talking about the achievement gap that talks about the 30 million-word gap that exists between affluent families and households and those in poverty, that kids, by the time they're three or four, poor kids are 30 million words behind. So, let's start first outside the classroom. What are you guys doing to sort of engage and connect with parents? And let's start with Mayor Castro.
I apologize. I didn't hear the question. The audio wasn't too clear.
Oh, okay. Well, then, we'll skip you, Mayor Castro. We'll come back to you. Let's get the audio correct for it, okay?
I'm checking for better answers.
That's okay. I'll get the... I'll ask it again at the end. Mayor Johnson.
I think we all know that, you know, in my mind, if you lay out five things. One, kids first. Everything we do has to be about, has to be about kids first. Number two, teachers matter. We know that the most important determinant at the school site on whether a kid is going to do well or not is having a good, high-quality teacher. Third, and Denver is doing this in an amazing way, parents deserve choices. And I'll get back to that in a second. Fourth, it is critical that we invest in what works. You don't want to keep investing in things and throwing dollars at something if something is not working. And then, lastly, you have to measure and reward results. And those are kind of the five lenses that we have in Sacramento. So, in terms of parents, I'm going to let these two talk about choice because they do an effective job of what you're offering here in Denver. But for me, it was important to create an environment where we can engage parents and make them feel welcome at school. You hear all over the country, kids can't learn because they're poor. Kids can't learn because their parents aren't involved. Kids can't learn. None of us subscribe to that. We don't believe that. And I'm going to give you three simple examples of where parents have actually tried to be involved and actually got pushed away or not been embraced in a real way to dispel some of that myth. So, number one, did anybody see the movie Waiting for Superman? If you remember, in this movie, there was a little Latina girl in LA, and she was trying to get the lottery, hoping that her name and number would get called. So, there were like 400 families trying to get seats, slots, when there was only like 10 or 12, or whatever it happened to be. So, that's an example of 400 families trying to do their part to study where good schools are. You know, sometimes they say, "Parents aren't sophisticated." That's a bunch of hogwash. Parents in poor neighborhoods that we grew up on want the exact same thing that parents want in other neighborhoods. So, you get these parents trying to do everything they could, and there're not enough high-quality seats or places for these kids to go to school. That's one example. Parents showing that they care. The second one, I'm going to stay in California since it's my neck of the woods. There's something called parent trigger. Have you guys heard of parent trigger? It's basically where parents can say, if we get more than 50% of our parents to sign a document saying, "Our school has failed repeatedly," the school district has to change that school. It has to overhaul it into a charter school or bring in a new principal or what have you, or let my kid go to another school. These parents in Southern California, they did that. And what ended up happening, they got threatened to be deported. Now, think about that. A parent trying to get their kid educated, exercising their right, and then got threatened to be deported. Unacceptable. And the third example would be in Akron, Ohio. You had this parent, she did not, you know this story, Lieutenant Governor, she was trapped, meaning the only place her kids could go to school was a neighborhood school, unlike Denver, a neighborhood school. And these schools weren't doing very well. She, so her kids had to go to this failing school. This parent made up an address. She falsified an address where her father lived. So, her father lived in another neighborhood, another zone that had better schools. Now, all of us in here would probably do that exact same thing if we had to. If you're rich, you send your kid to a private school. If you're almost rich, you move into a neighborhood with a really good public school. And if you're innovative, then you got to falsify your address if you don't have programs like you have here in Denver. So, the lady used her dad's address. They arrested her. The lady went to jail because she was trying to create an environment that her kids could have access to a high-quality school. So, to your question is, my job as a mayor is to make sure parents have the data, they know what schools are good and not good. And then, I've got to create an environment that when they come and say, "Where do I go? How can I make sure my son or daughter gets into a good school?" If the public schools aren't meeting their needs, then we need good public charter schools. And if they're not meeting their needs, then I've got to find a way to make sure that they have an opportunity to go to a great school.
Yeah. Mayor Castro, the question was, how are you, as the mayor, engaging parents in this whole education reform effort to close the achievement gap?
Yeah. Thank you very much for the question. You know, when we ran the Pre-K for SA initiative on the ballot, the number-one question that we got from voters was, "Well, what are you going to do about the parents? How are you going to make sure that parents are involved so that they can be effective shepherd of their child's education?" And what we've tried to do are a couple of things. First of all, from the way that the building is designed, the buildings are designed, from the very beginning, we've done what is more common now among new schools, which is to create a family room, a place where the parents are empowered essentially to run activities, to do meetings, to basically have their own space inside the school. And then, also, we're working with folks, with parents... And then also, we're working with folks, with parent groups, essentially to do peer-to-peer, parent-to-parent outreach in the neighborhood, literally to go door-to-door and get parents interested before a child turns four in sending their child to pre-K for SA and then remaining involved during that year, and giving them the skills that they need to be an effective shepherd, not just during that pre-K year, but in kindergarten, first grade, and so on and so forth. In other words, we're not satisfied just having an active PTA, although that is important. We also want to empower parents in their homes where they live to be effective teachers and shepherds of their kids the whole way through.
Unless you two really want to answer that question, I'd like to ask another. Okay, there are a lot of critics out there when it comes to education who say that all this mandatory testing and all that kind of stuff really is not really addressing learning, that, you know, the teachers are teaching to the test and stuff like that. What do you think about that?
Let me say, if I could, I want to add one thing to the first question, and I'll answer the second as well, because you talked about the 30-million-word gap that exists, and that's exactly what our proposal in terms of Providence Talks is about. It's not just about the word gap, it's about the fact that the brain is developing in the first couple of years. 80% of the white matter of the brain develops the first couple of years of a child's life. And the more that you talk to a child, the better the development as well. And what we're going to be doing in Providence, thanks to Michael Bloomberg and Bloomberg Philanthropies, is working with parents directly to record the number of words that a child hears, and then work with them with strategies on how to increase that and how to help them be an effective teacher, because the parent is the child's first teacher. And so when the mayor's tour comes to Providence, we'll have a pilot version of the program going, and I'm looking forward to showing the mayors what we're doing. And I'm very excited about the prospect, because this is something I hope that we can do, not just in Providence, but hopefully around the country. With respect to testing, I think that testing, for me, I've said this before, is important, but you need to make sure that you are testing, that the test actually is a valid test, and that you are, in fact, testing someone's ability. And Rhode Island, we have a big debate going on right now about using a test for a high school graduation. I'm opposed to using that test for the high school graduation, especially because we're going to the Common Core curriculum, and we're going to be using PACC assessments going forward, which I think is the right thing to do. But I also think testing is important for another reason. I'm a mayor. We're about to have a police, a new police recruit class. The way that people get onto the police department, they take a test. We just had a couple of, two fire department classes. The way that they get onto the fire department, they take a test. The promotions in the police department and the fire department, I don't know if it's the same way in the other cities, are, testing is so important. Testing is a fact of life, and I took the bar exam to get my license to practice law. I don't think we're doing anyone any favors by saying we shouldn't test our kids. Testing is, in fact, required in so many different things that we do, and we need to make sure that our kids are prepared to do that, and you can't tell me we can't make them critical thinkers and problem solvers, and also test their ability as well. So that's where I am on that issue.
You know, to the 30-word gap issue, I do believe, as all of us up here have tried to do in our cities, including Mayor Castro in San Antonio, congratulations on your election. The sales tax supporting early childhood education is what we've been doing in Denver for eight years now, and we just got the first results, and those kids are performing better than their peers who did not come through our program. So you're on the right track with that, and we look forward to talking to you more about that going forward. It is about educating our parents and making sure that they know that, as Anna Jo Haynes taught me, talk to the baby while it's in the womb, and begin to help them form words and to hear sounds that they will be familiar with when they come out of the womb. And it's very, very important that we learn how to read to our kids, the importance of reading to our kids at a very young age, particularly as young parents. You know, I thought about this, Greg, when you asked that question. You know, when I buy a car or an appliance, I get two things with that car. Get a nice key, a remote control, a remote, and I get a book that tells me how the car works. When I took those little babies home, there was no book that came home with us, saying this is how you handle this child, this is how you raise the child, this is how you're supposed to read to your child every night. It took other adults to teach me that. So we started having some conversations with Denver Health about how we can have books available to parents when they leave the hospital, not only with their carrier, but with a book that says, this is what you're supposed to do with this child when you get home. And so there's a lot of opportunities there for us to kind of step up on that area. I am one of those people who believe that we are seeing our teachers spend more time teaching toward the test than we are really educating our kids to be ready to compete in the 21st century. And it's unfortunate, because we've put a lot of pressure on these parents, on teachers, and we've put a lot of pressures on the students to make the grade on the test. And unfortunately, what we're seeing is a lot of things being cut out of schools. They used to make school for every student who walked through the door. They've lost their way with arts, they've lost their way with gym, they've lost their way with other cultural programming, and other electives that really caught the interest of kids who maybe are not that great academically, but let them feed their passion for other areas, so that when they came out of high school, they were able to direct their energies toward the things that they really wanted to do. And I think we're losing generations of kids who are coming out and they don't understand or have an appreciation for arts. I'm going to tell you something, that's why I'm supporting Amendment 66. It's time to bring it back to the classroom. And I don't mean to make this a political event, but I hope people of Colorado wake up and recognize it's time to fund our education, it's time to make sure that early childhood education is available for all of our kids, no matter where they live or what their life in life is, and that we're supporting them to get ready to enter kindergarten, ready to hit the ground running, so they can be ready to learn when they get into that school. But also that we give the schools more flexibility with regards to the opportunities they're giving those kids in the school. And I just believe that a lot of, particularly kids of color, are losing interest. And I've talked to kids over and over again who said, only when I was able to do X did the light come on to me. Why are these charter schools performing? Because they're giving kids different options other than saying, I'm preparing you for a test. And the last thing I want to share with you, Mayor Johnson and I learned a new word today, speaking of euphemism. Kids taught us a word, so we're still learning. Formative. They get rapid feedback on their test. That's how kids learn. That's how you and I learn. Where did I make the mistake? And how do I get better next time I take this test? And so the formative, the summative of what we do on these tests, we have to wait, kids wait till the end of the summer to find out how they did. That's a summative report. Formative is rapid. From the moment they get done with the test, they know where they made a mistake and they learn from it. And that was a recommendation from our Race to the Top Committee years ago. And here in Colorado, we haven't really applied it yet. So it's one of the things that we're going to continue testing our kids, give them rapid feedback, show them where they made mistakes, just like they learn on video games today, and let them go back and do it again.
You know, I would be curious about the one thing that you've been exposed to that you think would make the most difference in closing the achievement gap. Mayor Taveras, why don't we start with you? And try not to talk about something you're doing in your own city.
Well, let me first talk about Denver, because it was in Denver when I was here with Mayor Johnson and Mayor Hancock, saying one thing, grade-level reading. If we say one thing, if we have kids, if we can have kids reading at grade level by the end of third grade, they are much more likely to graduate high school. If they're not reading at grade level, they're much more likely to drop out of high school. Mayor Hancock has talked about 60/60, where you have 60% of your kids reading at grade level in Denver, 60% of those kids, or 60% graduating, right? And I said this last night, I said, you know, that 60% are the ones who are reading at grade level at third grade. So if you give me one thing, grade-level reading. One of the reasons we started Providence Reads, Sacramento Reads was before us, but the reason we started it in Providence is because we're a small community, we have the ability to go out there and work with people and make sure that our kids are getting the help that they need and that they are reading at grade level. You are learning to read up to the third grade afterwards, you read to learn. So if there's one thing, it's grade-level reading, I'm going to keep working on it and focused on it. And we were here because we're all part of the grade-level reading campaign, which is about 124 cities across the country.
Okay. Mayor Castro, the question is, what's the one thing that you've seen out there that you think could make the biggest difference in closing the gap?
Well, you know, at a general level, if I could wave a magic wand, the one thing that I would have, like I think all of us, would be parents that are super engaged in ensuring that they read to their children and that their children learn and so forth. But I believe that the research is very compelling, that if we can do one thing as policy, it would be to expand high-quality full-day pre-K. And that's what we're trying to do here in San Antonio, is to fill that gap of many folks in our community that start off behind in the first place and trying to ensure that they're kinder-ready and they're more likely to hit their marks in third grade and stay in school and graduate from high school and go on. So as mayor, and along with the business community and the general community, we've chosen to focus on that one thing here, which has been high-quality early childhood education.
Good. Let me ask another question to Mayor Johnson. You've been parts of teams that have had to be rebuilt sometimes rather quickly. I guess I wonder whether sometimes. I'm from Cleveland, I can say that.
He whispered and said, that's a euphemism.
That's a euphemism, that's a euphemism.
Harvard grad right here.
Yeah. I wonder, is there any part of you that thinks, well, you know, this system has been given long enough to prove itself, maybe it can't be reformed from the inside, maybe we have to blow it up and start over again?
There's a lot of me that feels that. You know, I think, you know, to innovate is not to reform in many respects, and it's a subtlety and a nuance. And, you know, your previous question, what would be that one thing? It's choice at the end of the day. I mean, it really, all these things that we're doing are important, but you want kids and families to have choice. Because if you have choice, it changes the whole dynamic, and that's why what's happening in Denver is so important. You guys are just leading the way in a real tangible dynamic. And I got to give one data point, because it's important, as we think about this dialogue, when we talk about achievement gap, let's put this in perspective, that 75% of kids who are white graduate high school. That's not even a great number, but it's three-quarters. If you're black or Latino, it's a little bit over 50%. And if you do graduate and you're black or Latino, you're performing at the same level as white kids in eighth grade. That's what we mean by an achievement gap. Latino kids, if you start out with 100 of them in kindergarten, only 10% will go on to graduate. That's just not acceptable in this country. So I believe we've got to have real, honest discussions. I'm not trying to make everybody happy. I just want kids to learn. That's our responsibility. And for me, if something is working in a public traditional school, great, let's do more of them. And if they're not, then let's create some choice options with charter schools or innovative schools or alternative schools. Vista was a great alternative program that we saw today in Denver. Private schools, it doesn't really matter to me. I just want kids to have a choice and to be able to experience the American dream. And that is why we fight so hard to create these options for young people. And I am all for, and, you know, this is probably a little bit different than what most people would say, because your question was, can you change it from within? It is really difficult to change it from within. But if you have a superintendent and a mayor working hand-in-hand, like you do in Denver, you've got Superintendent Tom and Mayor Hancock working together, now all of a sudden, you're creating public-private dynamics, you're bringing more stakeholders together, you're looking at things with a different paradigm. Yes, that is what we mean by, if something is working, then let's do more of those. And I think you guys in Denver are really getting at it in a real way, and real policies are a part of that. And, you know, hopefully before it's over, I too will say, the Amendment 66 is something that you guys have to do in Denver. It's an example for what states can do, and other states will follow as well.
Yeah. You know. I didn't want to spend too much time on, I didn't want to spend too much time talking about policy and politics, but let me ask you, Mayor Hancock, what does success look like? You know, when we talk about ed reform and all that, what does success really look like?
Well, I think the first thing we want to do is shift from saying ed reform to educational opportunities for all kids, period. Because in Denver, in other parts of the country, we have schools that have been reformed or replaced with charter schools, traditional schools. And we have some traditional schools that have transitioned and begun to perform at a higher rate, much more progressive and getting the kids exactly what they need, and they're doing well. In my world, success looks like this. No matter what neighborhood I live in, the quandary that I have as a parent is which of the high-performing schools I put my kids in. I might choose it based on the mascot. I might want to be a thunderbolt as opposed to an angel. You know, hey, just saying, just going there.
Wait, 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 wait. Were you a mascot before?
Yeah. You've been waiting to do that all day to me. I was huddled about the time you were wearing those real tight shorts running up and down the basketball court. But so success with me is that right now, fortunately, parents, some parents in some neighborhoods don't have an option. Their kids are forced in those, in failing schools, or they're forced to find a way to get their kid across town to another school. And today, tomorrow morning, if you want to wake up, you want to see something, drive around your neighborhood. Let me just pick a neighborhood, just drive around it, and you'll see some kids standing on a bus stop at 4:30, 5 o'clock in the morning. And if you don't believe me, go home tonight and just stop by a bus stop. And I don't want you to be looking like you're stalking a bus stop, because we have laws against adults waiting for kids to get off the bus. But watch how many kids are getting off the bus at 9 o'clock with backpacks, and they're going home for the first time. So my vision of success is that I move into any neighborhood in the city, and my biggest challenge is which one of these high-performing schools do I choose?
Okay. I think we have time for maybe one more question, and maybe all of you can answer this question. Mayor Castro, let's start with you. What's the one thing you would like to see the federal government do to sort of contribute to moving this ball? What's the one thing? You pick it.
The one thing, the what?
The one thing that you think or would like to see the federal government do to contribute to addressing this problem?
The audio is coming in and out.
You can't hear me?
Yeah. Is this better, Mayor Castro? No, I don't know. I don't think so. But maybe I'll take the lead on that.
Take the lead on it.
What's the one thing I would like to see the federal government do to help us? I think probably fully fund Head Start and early Head Start, so that all of our kids, all of our kids are able to take advantage of preschool. And right now in Providence, it's about one-third of the eligible kids, one out of three of the eligible kids are in Head Start. So if I could have the federal government do one thing, that would be one thing, and I've got some other thoughts, too, but I'll let the other man.
How about just operate? I'm just saying, open. Do what we sent you to Washington to do. I've been wanting to say that all day, by the way. You know, when it comes to education, I think the, I agree with full-day Head Start, but also I think making sure that full-day kindergarten is funded for every citizen and every five-year-old who wants to go to kindergarten across this nation.
Mayor Johnson? Mayor Castro, you want to jump in there?
Yeah, sure. Well, you know, I think that, of course, there are so many things the federal government can do to be helpful. I think overall, make smart investments. And, you know, I hate to sound like a broken record, but particularly as President Obama pursues universal pre-K, that is a fantastic path to take. So I would say the one thing in 2013 and beyond is to make smart investments to create the brain power we're going to need to compete in the 21st century global economy, and start with pre-K.
Okay. Mayor Johnson?
So I read this article about three months ago, Tom Friedman wrote this article. Uh, so, so I read this article about three months ago, Tom Friedman wrote this article, and he said, I wanna be a mayor. He said it's the coolest job in America. And it, I mean, we actually do believe it, really. And he says, if you look at it, it used to be Washington where all the major decisions were happening and mayors were like children and they were the adults. Unfortunately, it has flipped. And fortunately, actually fortunately, it's flipped. And if you look at the real innovation, laboratories have changed, where things are happening, they're happening in cities. So the one thing I would like to see, I'm a huge fan of President Obama, he's taking hard stands on education. Uh, Arnie Duncan is doing an incredible job, they're putting policies in place, they did the carrot and the stick approach with, uh, race to the top, which was great, cause that's required states to change the way they did business. But the one thing that I would like to add to what we've just said here, is I would like a program where the federal government could put dollars or do a race to the top that go directly to mayors and school districts at the local level. And lo and behold, they did it. They actually have created a program where dollars, that whole race to the top where states were competing for dollars, now mayors and local school districts can also compete for dollars that where we can then get those dollars, get politics out of the way, and get results in ways that we think are really powerful, because we know how to do it. If you look around this country, metropolitan areas, we have the most jobs, we have the most people, GDP, everything is at the local level, and I think we're the best examples of what can really happen. And I'd like to just say to everybody in here that all kids can learn, no matter what their neighborhood is, their zip code and what they look like, every child can learn.
Listen, I wanna thank everybody, I wanna thank the mayors, I'm gonna turn it back over to Peter, I hope, um, I hope you all enjoyed the conversation as much as I did.
Gentlemen, thank you so much. Please give these mayors a round of applause. Just a couple things and we will let you go. This tour will continue, we will be in Sacramento December 11th, I believe. 12th and 13th.
Everybody's invited.
Everybody's invited. And there's a Kings game, I think, that we're all going to.
This is true, this is true.
We will be in Providence January 30th and 31st. We will be in San Antonio March 5th and 6th, I think around that time, and then we will wrap it up with an event with Democrats for Education Reform, New York, and probably April or May. Let me recognize one other person who came in, my former colleague who is also running for Denver's School Board, who will be outstanding, Rosemary Rodriguez, right there. She holds a special place in my heart because she was the city clerk and signed my marriage license 15 years ago. One last personal note, um, I believe that education is the one thing that consistently and constantly and permanently changes the world and your world. And when my friend reached out to me and said, we've gotta do something, and I didn't formally introduce him before, cause I wanted to say this at the end, uh, but when the 44th mayor, 45th mayor, um, reached out to me and said, I really wanna do something on education, I felt the need as a friend to tell him, this is dicey, cause you don't really have any legitimate constitutional authority to work in this area. And he said, and this is the reason I love this man, he said, I don't care, I wanna do what's right for kids. And I will use every single tool that I have as mayor of this city to ensure that every single child has a high-quality education. And he would not let it rest, um, after our first conversation about trying to pull folks together. Um, and so to Mayor Hancock, I wanna thank you for your dedication. When I was first elected, um, to the Colorado House in 2000, he came to me the day after and said, don't ever let politics stand in the way of doing what's right. Um, and I have taken that to this day to make sure that I do what's right or what I think is right. And then to see him be one of the most powerful, and he's actually constitutionally, he's more powerful than the governor. I don't think the lieutenant governor, uh, but certainly the governor, and, and what he is able to do. Um, and I've watched him from afar do what's right for kids, day after day after day. Um, and he, I'm proud to call him my best friend. So I wanna make sure that we give him thanks for what he's been able to pull together with this rock star group of mayors. Again, you can follow the tour, uh, mayors tour dot com and at @mayors tour on Twitter. Um, thank you all so much for your time. Let's go out and do what's right for kids and follow the lead of these great mayors.